I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody. This is Tuesday, April 1st, 2025. First thing we need is any public input on the agenda lineup. All right, if not, can I get a motion to approve the agenda, please?
Otten.
Got a motion from Commissioner Otten. Is there a second?
A second.
Got a second from Commissioner Ehrens. If there's no discussion, Alicia, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Otten?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Putnam?
Yes.
Landy?
Yes. Motion carries. Next, we'll move on to our consent agenda. Any public comment on our consent agenda this morning? If not, can I get a motion, please?
Move for approval.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. If there's no discussion, we call the roll, please.
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Otten?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Putnam?
Yes.
Landy?
Yes. And then moving on to our regular business, item number one. Betty, do you want to?
Yeah, come on up, Carrie.
Good morning. I am Carrie Elling. I'm the new HR Director for Lincoln County, and I just wanted to introduce myself this morning. Commissioner Landy and the rest of the commissioners. Just want to let you know that my office hours are open, so I welcome you to come visit. If you have questions or concerns, just come see me anytime. Any questions? Thank you.
Welcome. Thank you.
All right, I can.
Can I?
Yeah, go ahead.
I wanted to let everybody know that the first day that the HR Director position was posted, we had over 10 applicants that were really good applicants, and then we had several others within the next few days. So we had a great field to choose from. Applicants, excuse me, went through two intensive interviews with the same two leadership teams, and it was a unanimous decision to offer, excuse me, Carrie, the HR Director position. Excuse me, she has exceptional leadership skills. She holds a doctorate in educational leadership, a master of business administration, and bachelor of arts in English literature. She is also an adjunct professor and dissertation chair teaching leading transformational change at the University of Sioux Falls. And if that's not busy enough for you, she teaches a Pilates class in Sioux Falls twice a week at six in the morn- twice a day. At six in the morning?
Five and six.
Five and six. There you go. So with her this morning is her assistant, Ashley Anderson. So welcome aboard, Carrie.
Thank you. All right, item two on our agenda, board action to purchase from a Harding County bid. Terry, good morning.
Morning, Commissioners. Terry Floyd, Lincoln County Highway Superintendent. Yeah, looking for permission to purchase from a Turner County bid for crane and heavy equipment work from Holloway Construction. Whoa.
Is it Loisa or Holloway?
This one here, I think they have the wrong one pulled up. This is item three here. Here, let me get you this one. There we go. An item two, board action to purchase from a Harding County bid for road construction machinery from Loisa Construction. Again, we're going to be reutilizing them to do full depth reclamation on County Road 134, base stabilization additive injection, and then we'll be doing some mill work out there as well. The FDR is at $1.28 a square yard. Additive injection is $1.28 a square yard, and project is approximately 103,000 square yards, so.
All right, does anybody have any questions for Terry? All right, is there any public input on this agenda item? All right, if not, can I get a motion to approve the purchase?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Second, Otten.
Thank you. I've got a motion and a second. Any discussion amongst the commission? If not, Alicia, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Otten?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Putnam?
Yes.
Landy?
Yes. Motion carries. Next is a board action to purchase from a Turner County bid.
All right, the next item again, we're purchasing from a Turner County bid for crane and other heavy equipment from Holloway Construction Bridge and Culvert Incorporated. Again, we're going to be using Holloway Construction. We're going to be setting three new girders on two different bridges. Again, they're listed in the facts and vetting here. And then we're also going to be using them to set a precast box culvert that we're going to be installing this year on County Road 134, so.
All right, anybody have any questions for Terry? All right, any public input on this agenda item? All right, if not, can I get a motion to approve the purchase?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. If there's no further discussion, Alicia, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Otten?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Putnam?
Yes.
Landy?
Yes. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Terry.
Next item up, we have our sheriff. Good morning, Steve.
Morning. Steve Swenson, Lincoln County Sheriff. I'm just asking for your approval to approve and execute the Harrisburg Law Enforcement Contract for '26, '27, '28. Really no big changes in it other than the population increase is increased by about 30%. So from $1 million, approximately to $1,379. We also added an additional $4 per capita for dispatch services, which is an additional $41,188. This is a three-year contract with 3% increase annually.
Thank you.
Same as every year versus the dispatch fee.
Good job.
All right, anybody have questions for sheriff? All right, any public input on this agenda item? All right, if not, can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, Alicia, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Otten?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Putnam?
Yes.
Landy?
Yes. Motion carries. And then you've got the next item, Steve?
The second item is we would like to start advertising for a position that is, we have a retirement in the jail courthouse security division that's currently a part-time position. I'd like to at least have the option to fill it with a full-time position. It just, it's for better coverage. Once we move out to the courthouse, the new courthouse, we're going to need that position anyway. Obviously, if we can find somebody part-time, that'd be great, but it's just, it's gotten more difficult to fill those positions with part-time that will work a mandatory schedule.
When you advertise it, are you going to do either part-time or full-time?
That's what I, that's what I'd like to do, but I'd like to have the option. I prefer full-time.
Sure, okay.
And it's currently not budgeted as a full-time position.
All right, Commissioners, anybody have questions for Steve? All right, any public input on this agenda item? All right, can I get a motion?
Move for approval, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right, Alicia, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Otten?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Putnam?
Yes.
Landy?
Yes. Motion carries. Next item, Franny, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. I am here to discuss and see if I could do an over hire for a position in my office. I have an employee who will be retiring in June, so I just want to kind of get into the hiring option now. I am currently hiring for an open position, so I just saw if I could do it all in one. With the new motor V system, they now have to do two weeks of training before they can even start learning on our side, so.
All right, anybody have any questions for Franny? All right, any public input on this agenda item? All right, if not, can I get a motion, please?
Otten.
Got a motion, and that's a motion to approve, Commissioner? Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, if not, Alicia, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Otten?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Putnam?
Yes.
Landy?
Yes. Motion carries. All right, good morning, Sheri.
Good morning, Sheri, Lincoln County Auditor. I'm coming up today to ask you to reduce the budget authority in the two following budgets, the treasurer budget and the general government budget. The reason is, is we originally had 15,500 budgeted in the treasurer's budget for furniture and minor equipment, and we had 342,500 in the general building. It was for the satellite office in Harrisburg. I don't see, I haven't heard any discussion about it moving forward. I don't even know if the building would be available, if the numbers are good. I think we should probably start the process over if they're not, but I think right now we should probably remove the authority for the budget. So that would be my request.
All right, anybody on the board have questions for Sheri?
I don't have a question, but I can tell you what's going on with the project up there. Harrisburg School District needs to figure out whether they want to sell the building or not. Perhaps there's going to be a decision made by the superintendent before he leaves office this summer. We'll find out. I did speak with Harrisburg Economic Development Corporation, and they're actively encouraging the superintendent up there to make some decisions in the school board. And they still want to have us up there, I know that. And I talked to Marcus Malin as well about it at the SMGA meeting. And yeah, they still want to have us there, but I don't think there's going to be any decisions made anytime soon.
All right, can I? Any other questions? All right, any public input on this agenda item? All right, if not, then can I get a motion?
Otten. To approve?
Thank you, to reduce the budget. All right, I got a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the Commissioners?
Hey, anytime we can put money back. It's a good, it's a good sign.
I don't get to do it often, so when I get to chance, I do it.
Don't get used to it, right?
Well, just wait a couple of weeks, we're going to do a different thing, so.
Alicia, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Otten?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Putnam?
Yes.
Landy?
Yes. Motion carries. Next, we have our department head presentations, and Sheri, you are up first, it looks like.
Jake, do I just click the mouse to move it? Everybody shaking their head up? Okay. All right, so what is the Auditor's Office? Like most of the auditors across the state, we do a lot of hand-on work in the, well, I do a lot of the hand-on work in the Auditor's Office, but I am very fortunate to have very, or five outstanding deputies working for me. Michelle Burkhart is my finance manager, Alicia Caffaro is my commission clerk, Kayla Delfts is the election coordinator, Jean Macy is the payroll specialist, and Maureen Samo is the lien specialist. The job duties are relative to their job titles. However, we cross-train in the positions to make sure that we have coverage. They are also responsible to make sure that I maintain my sanity, and anybody that knows me knows they are underpaid. And you want to take a minute to thank them publicly because they do work hard to make sure that all the county bills are paid, all the employees are paid, the finances are reconciled, and that anything that is put in front of them, whether it be legislatively or from you folks, that they handle. The Auditor's Office is responsible for the finances of the county to include the cash reconciliation, monthly and annually, reporting of the finances. Michelle will be presenting a recap of the 2024 annual report on May 27. The Auditor's Office is also responsible for collecting the requests from the taxing entities and calculating the levies and apportioning the taxes collected. We are responsible for the accounts payable and the vendor maintenance, accounts receivable, sheriff's billings, airport billings, mental illness billings, billings, and county aid liens. County aid liens currently have outstanding receivables totaling over $11 million. In 2024, we had collections of 335,000, and we compromised just under 10,000. We process our payroll through ADP. We also process the alcohol beverage license for the county. We have eight liquor license, seven malt beverage license, and one wine license. We process all the temporary license, and by that I mean we bring them in front of the board for approval. We also track the cannabis license, and Lincoln County currently has six issued. We are the clerk for the board and manage the public record request process. And we are the supervisor for the elections and all the fun that comes with that. This is a quick look of the responsibility of the Auditor's Office. I do not have, I would not be able to go over everything we are responsible for in the 15 minutes, so. What we accomplished in 2024, we helped implement the ADP payroll software. We ran a successful primary and general election. We assisted with the first post-election audit, and we worked with the Budget Committee to give guidelines for the budget process. What we expect to be doing in 2025 is we are going to be implementing software that will help the budget process more transparent. We are going to be implementing the AP automation process for payables. We're going to continue to work with the Budget Committee to improve the budget process, improve the look of the financial statements for the, not only for the Commissioners, but for the publics to make them more readable, I guess you could say. And depending on the legislative session, which we've seen, we're going to try to figure out how to implement the new laws. This year, we did track 76 of the bills that were presented. Of the 76 bills that were presented, 48 of those were election. 12 of them were tax and 16 were miscellaneous. The governor signed 22 election, one tax, nine miscellaneous, so for a total of 32. 25 election bills failed, 10 tax bills failed, three miscellaneous, for a total of 38. So we do have a lot of work ahead of us. We have, one of the election bills count for combining the city, school, and county elections. So we've reached out to the city and schools to start the conversations on how that's going to look for 2026. It's going to be a little bit of a process since we have not previously done that, but we're going to work, we'll work through it. We will process list maintenance for voter registration rolls. We're going to look for new polling location for Delapre Township, so if anybody has any suggestions. And we're going to try to send out old invoices for county aid liens to see if we can catch anybody that may not have seen a invoice. To what we need for 2026, if we make it through 2025 with all of the legislative updates we're going to have to do, we are going to have a 2026 election. We're going to have the auditor, sheriff, registered deeds, coroner, commissioner districts 1, 3, and 5 race. I don't anticipate needing any additional employees, and I do not look forward to any additional software. Does anybody have any questions for me? It was quick, I'm sorry, but at a very high level.
Don't apologize. Anybody have any questions for Sheri?
Perfect, thank you. And my door is open. If anybody, public or commission, has any questions anytime, we can have long conversations over coffee.
Madam Chair, before you sit down, Sheri, I doubt, I doubt sincerely if people truly understand the enormous amount of work that comes out of your office. I know we kid and chide you and all that kind of stuff, but for a staff of five, when you look at 80,000 people, we truly are very efficient. And I commend you publicly for getting all that done, for taking care of all the road districts, taking care of all the tip districts, taking care of all of those issues, and yet to have maintained a pleasant personality.
What do you need?
Congratulations. I think people should really understand and appreciate how hard a job that is and how she makes, gets all that done, so.
Well, again, it's, you know, without the great staff I have, it wouldn't be possible.
Thanks, Sheri.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sheri.
Any public input on Sheri's presentation?
Linda Montgomery, Fairview, South Dakota. Sheri, thank you for your presentation. What I'm going to talk about is the 2026. We, President Trump came up with executive order. If you haven't read that, we, it will affect our elections. And basically, what this first executive order, and I can think that there will be more coming as far as election integrity, is voter ID, paper ballots, proof of citizenship, and same-day voting are all possibilities. And those are just a few things. The 20 bills that were passed, thank goodness by our good legislature, were all bills that will focus on this. The, it was rather exciting this year out there as far as election integrity bills, that we had such support at that time. President Trump, as I said, did allude to there will be more bills coming. And, you know, over the last four years, we've talked about the machines. We've talked about that we have never, in the time that I've been coming and talking, we have still never been able to audit a machine, which is very pertinent, and that's why so many bills were brought and so many bills got passed, because I'm not the only one. And so I encourage, and then the other one. And if we do, and I believe we will, by the time 2026 comes around, we will be looking at counting at precinct level, doing away with the machines. In fact, that's my prayer. And what I'm looking at, I think that we have more, what we need is precincts that are less than 1,000. And we have a few over 1,000, and we have six over 2,000 in a precinct. And just when you look at if, I believe, will happen hand counting at the precinct level, we need to get those more manageable. And we have one, two, quite a few that share precincts that share the same voting center location that may have to be looked at in the future. I commend Sheri for her work, but I do think that, oh, and the other thing that I want about it that I never did get asked, in 2026, you're not looking for any additional software. But if we do use the machines, the Windows 10 will not be, continue to be supportive. And if we still have that in our electionware software, that will need to be changed out.
Linda, are you about done?
Yes.
Thank you. You are out of time.
That's all right.
Thank you. Sheri, is there any comment that you want to make to that? Let me ask first, is there any other public comment on the Auditor's presentation? All right, Sheri, if you want to, you can, but you certainly don't have to.
No, but I always appreciate Linda's input. I've worked with her on several different options, or different discussions. I am aware of President Trump's executive order, and thankfully, South Dakota does follow most of everything he said in there. Lincoln County follows him as far as the DS 200. We do not have that. We have the 850, so we're right in track. So we're good, we're in a good shape compared to some counties.
Thank you, Sheri.
That is only an executive order. That's not implemented. That's not law yet, you know. I mean, I always, you know, Linda, I have to tell you this. For a state that probably has the least amount of voter irregularities, we spend an inordinate amount of time trying to find something that is wrong with the whole thing. I, it gets to be very frustrating from my point of view, but we'll debate that some other time.
Democracy is worth protecting regardless of whether there's issues.
Nobody has the floor right now, so Sheri gave her presentation. We're not going to get into a big back and forth. So I'm going to go ahead, and Franny, if you want to come up and give your presentation, that'd be great.
All right, good morning. So I'm just going to go over what the Treasurer's Department does. So we are responsible for collecting all the taxes for the counting, all the real estate, special assessment taxes, as long as, as well as mobile homes. We also handle all the senior citizen and elderly citizen freezes that are done. So we help them. If they have any questions, they can bring all their forms into the office. We assist them with filling those out. We are, we title and license all new and used boats, motor vehicles, motorcycles, snowmobiles, trailers, along with adding any lien notations, lien releases, and then the duplicate titles that are done. In my office, I currently have seven people who handle all of that. So for 2024, we had answered over 40, 24,000 phone calls and processed only over 20,000 pieces of mail. Most of that is done by the two people who sit in the back. That is their main job to answer the phones, get the mail done. We are mostly process all of the mail the same day. There's occasional days where we're really busy, we're a day behind, but other than that, we get it all handled on that same day. And then last year, we processed 250 elderly and disabled tax freeze applications. This is just kind of an overview on the interest on investments that we have done. You can see that in 2022, we had gotten about $176,000 in interest. You can see in '23, '24, '25, that interest has gone up to over $1 million. That is just kind of watching the accounts that they're in, moving the money when we can. We have a couple of accounts that have the higher interest rates. Hopefully, they stay that way. They have been dropping, so we are trying to keep that, get as much interest off that as we possibly can while the interest rates are still high. So for 2025, through March, we had processed over 5,000 pieces of mail, answered over 7,000 phone calls. We have been navigating through our new 605 drive motor V system. They are planning on digitizing a lot of the motor vehicle systems, so scanning in all the paperwork instead of sending it through the mail every day. We have had a lot of increase of customers at the counters because of this new system. The kiosks have not been working for everyone, so they've been having to come down. A lot of people don't know about the new website, so they have been coming in in person to get their renewals and stuff done. And then looking forward to 2026, like I said, the state is planning on digitizing all the motor vehicle system. So we will be scanning in all that paperwork, and I'm not sure when that will be starting or what that will all entail. Hopefully, we will learn more at the conferences this year. Any questions?
Anybody have any questions for Franny? I have a question. What is the state doing to, you know, market this so people do know about it? If anything?
So the state has put out stuff on their website. It seems like a lot of the counties have been marketing it more. I know there have been a couple news articles over the news talking about it. Most counties have put it on Facebook, on their Instagrams, their websites, their front doors, kind of a thing to try to get that information out there.
All right, anybody have any questions for Franny?
I do, too.
Yep.
Yep, go ahead, Commissioner Putnam.
Yeah, go ahead. The, you talked about having two weeks to train a person for that drive to 605 or whatever it's called.
Yep, so with the new system, there are videos that you have to watch. And so state is requiring any new person to watch all of those before they can even have access to the new system. We all started doing that in December through February.
Really?
And it was, I would say, probably seven to 80 hours worth of training.
I, I guess I'm a car dealer, and so I had to get on it, and it took me about 20 minutes. I'm not a profession, but, but I can get on there and do it.
Yes.
Yeah. So I guess I didn't realize there's quite so much training involved in that deal.
Yes.
Any other questions for Franny?
Franny, do you ever see a time when we're going to get one of these kiosks down here that would, like they have a couple of Hy-Vee stores? that would, like they have a couple of Hy-Vee stores, anything?
Not anytime soon. Last time I checked with state, they're at their max of how many they have in the state, and they don't plan on moving any of them, as far as I know. So I would say probably not.
Is that limited? I mean, because of the... I mean, it seems like a good idea, but I just wondered why they set a cap on them or something.
Yeah. I guess I'm not sure why state has that cap on it.
Okay. All right.
Madam Chair?
Yeah, go ahead.
I want to just say how much I appreciate you investing the Treasury stuff and getting all of the new revenue coming back into the Treasury Department. Thank you.
Yep.
All right. Last call for any questions? All right. If there are any questions, is there any public input on Franny's presentation? All right. Thank you, Franny. We'll move on to our Department of Equalization presentation. Good morning, Carla.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commission. Carla Gosin, Lincoln County Director of Equalization. This morning, I am presenting a dual information for you guys. First, we're going to start off with the department head presentations that you've seen for the last few weeks. The second, I will be diving into the appeal process since in the upcoming weeks, she'll be sitting as the Board of Equalization. I want to thank our county auditor for reviewing my presentation and looking at the department head presentation and noticing this is a lot of information that you typically do with your annual meeting with the commission in accordance to SDCL 10314. So she moved my presentation to today so I can do one, sit down with you, to do the department head presentation and also my annual review. Again, I want to thank the auditor for recognizing that and scheduling or rescheduling the presentation. I gave everybody a binder this year, and in the binder is the department head presentation, some responsibilities. Also, we're going to look at appeals, and then just a brief overview of the new Senate Bill 216 that was passed and signed by the governor. Just an overview of it and what my take is. There's been no formal training. There's a lot of questions in regards to it that I won't be able to answer, but some of the things that I can answer, I'd like to go over with you guys today. So let's get started on the department head presentation. What is the Equalization Office? And then we'll look at the 2024 Year in Review, Expectations for 2025, and Looking Forward to 2026. What is the Director of Equalization Office? Well, let's start with staff. Have quite a big staff in comparison to most departments. We currently have five, 15 full-time employees and one part-time employee. I'm the director. We have a deputy director, 10 certified appraisers, three property technicians, and again, a part-time clerk. We also have a fleet of vehicles. We have seven vehicles that are on the fleet. All have been... We maintain our own cars. Each appraiser is assigned a car, and they do maintenance on it, do the mileage, which we present monthly to the commission. We currently have three 2015 Chevy Cruises, a 2021 Dodge Durango, two Chevy Equinoxes. We did eliminate the Ford F-150 and was granted permission through budgets last year to buy a new 2025 Equinox. And then we have a 2005 Dodge Dakota. Some of the details of the department, like what are we? What does the Equalization Office? What is it? It's like a mystery out there. We do property values, not property taxes. We assess all property, currently 32,000 plus and counting at full market value, using three approaches to value: the cost, the market, and the income. What is that? The cost is a replacement cost, new minus any depreciation that you acquire on your property, physical, functional, and economic obsolescence. Currently, in South Dakota, we are required, assessors are required, to use one of two appraising manuals. Lincoln County has opted in 2011 to use the Vanguard Cost Manual to develop our costs. Vanguard is a Midwest appraisal manual. It's out of Cedar Rapids, Iowa. They have been in operation since 1968, same year I was born. And they started out just mass appraisal, and they would come into counties and they would completely revalue the entire county. Over the years, they developed a cost manual, which has been implemented throughout the Midwest. 90% of Iowa uses the Vanguard Cost Manual. Over 50%, probably nearing 60, of South Dakota counties use the Vanguard Cost Manual. Most counties in North Dakota use the Vanguard Cost Manual. We also look at a market approach to value, which is essential, your also sales comparison approach. We look at the property that we're appraising, and then we find like properties and make adjustments for those changes that are not like the subject property. Those adjustments are typically size adjustments, age adjustments, quality condition adjustments. And then we also use the income approach to value. And that income approach is the property's earning capacity minus any expenses or vacancies, and then we capitalize it using a cap rate. And part of the components of a cap rate is your discount rate, which is essentially your interest rate, your effective tax rate, and then your recapture rate. And typically, your recapture rate is from the age and life expectancy of the building. So those are the three approaches that county assessors must consider. We also review and make recommendations on all the appeals, in which you'll be sitting as the Board of Equalization again, and we'll make recommendation on all those appeals. We prepare the abstract for the auditor so she can calculate the levies. We process all the property transfers, plats, annexations, create, review all taxing districts, including TIFs. So if a TIF is set up, we come up, the equalization comes up with the base value, and then we track all the incremental value. That is part of the abstract that the auditor used to calculate the levies. We maintain and track all property tax relief and assessment exemption programs. You heard Franny talk, the county treasurer, talk about the elderly and disabled applications. They approve the applications. Once they're approved, they're sent up to the Equalization Office to make all the assessment changes necessary. So now we're going to break it down a little bit, and we're going to talk about what we have done in 2024. And this, again, is very similar to what you have heard during my annual evaluation, according to South Dakota Codified Law 10314. So this is part of my presentation, but with the grace of our county auditor, she said, Carla, just talk as long as you need. I'm open for any questions that you have, because this is a dual information. We're going to talk about appeals, building permit, property transfers, new parcels, relief programs, and then some of the things that we... projects, that I call them. We rewrote all the legal descriptions on the property tax records. So appeals. I am giving you a chart of what our appeals have looked like through the years. In 2021, we had 355 appeals, and that was countywide. And then in 2024, we had 413. As I... right before I came downstairs, what we're looking at today, a local board heard 206 appeals, which is a lot lower than some of these other numbers. We did get a batch of appeals that came in late on Friday, one property owner, 44 parcels that they're appealing. So that made the number go up, but I'm very confident, once you hear the first appeal, the remainder of the appeals will fall in place, because they're all residential lots in a development. So that number is still lower than what we had last year, but it's, you know, it's just that time of the year for people to start appealing. Our appeal assessments from '23 to '24 were up about 17%, and then from '22 to '24 was about a 9% increase. Building permit activity. This, again, shows you a chart of how the building permits are looking, and these building permits are... the numbers that are presented to you are how many permits that my appraisers review. We have way more building permits than 3,700 in '24. We had about 4,300. A lot of those permits are new shingles, but we don't go out and look at everybody's shingles. We... that doesn't usually change the value. It's just maintenance. Where it could change the value is if I replace my shingles, replace my doors, replace my windows, you know? Then there's a maintenance issue that is greater than what it was the year before. Property transfers. So those are property transfers that come from the Register of Deeds. When folks change ownership or they sell a property, those property transfers are recorded in the Register of Deeds office and then, again, sent up to our office, and then we make the necessary changes and we track the sales, and we verify the sales, if it's an arms-length transaction or if it's not on the open market. So we do all those quality control checks in the Equalization Office. You can see in 2021 and 2022, those were high transfer years. People were buying and selling and moving to South Dakota, in particular, Lincoln County. Since then, they have dropped down to more of a normal level. I did go back in 2020, our transfer count was about 2,900. So that would be right in line to what we're seeing, you know? If we didn't have these outliers of 2021, 2022, I think our chart would just be gradually increasing, as it should, because when... our next slide will be parcels. So as our parcels grow in the county, that's when our transfers grow as well, because they develop a parcel of land and then they sell it, right? So usually, our property transfers, our building permits, and our parcel counts are very similar, because all of those take place typically in that order, you know? They platted out, they transfer it, and then they build on it. So our new parcel count, again, in '22 and '23, which would come from our '21 and '22 sale, transfers, I guess, are very high numbers. We grew in Lincoln County in '22 and '23, more so than even Minnehaha County. I was tracking that parcel, new parcel counts, and in contact with the Director of Equalization in Minnehaha, and we superseded. We... well, we just were above their new parcel counts. It has dropped, and I actually see it continuing to drop with the new parcels. And it's because developers are not... no longer, they're not developing an entire development. They're... typically, we would see blocks and lots, four blocks, 25 lots per block, being platted all at once. But I think since there's been somewhat of slowdown in stabilization, I think our developments will be plating once again, because it's what they used to do, is just plating a few lots at a time instead of an entire development. So even though you see the numbers drop, that's very normal. We weren't normal in '21, '22, and '23. That was exceptionally high. But I do forecast, if I had my crystal ball, I would say developers are going to be plating less lots at a time instead of entire development. So this is just a continuation on our relief programs. Our relief programs actually went up 28% from '23 to '24. We are just now getting our '25. The property tax relief program that Franny was talking about, the elderly and disabled, the deadline is today. The other morning, I walked down and I poked my head in Franny's door, and I said, "So what do you see with relief programs?" She goes, "We got 20 today," which is a big number. 20% or 20 in one day over 250 that she processed last year? That's just 10% in one day. It just... our relief programs are growing, which is good, right? That's we want to give to relief those that qualify. And again, our legal description rewrite. Before, if you ever look at your '24 assessment notice versus your '25 assessment notice, legal descriptions were written, in my opinion, just backwards, not necessarily it was wrong, but it didn't read proper, in my opinion. So staff took... we took a look at all of our legal descriptions and rewrote them in sequential order, is how they appear on a deed. We went with lot, block, addition, and city. And then in the rural, we went with, you know, tract, number, quarter, section, township range, the way they are written on a deed. Expectations of '25. So we are starting our second round of reappraisal. It's been 10 years since we first started the reappraisal. We're really aggressively going with the remote assessors. I want to review job descriptions for the entire office and notice some job description inefficiencies. I want to clear those up. So I'll be working with our new HR director on that. Yes, looking forward to it. So what will we be doing in '25? Well, we're starting our second round of reappraisal, and we're starting again in Delapre and T. So there's approximately 4,200 parcels that we'll be reviewing. That's 40% more than what we did in 2015. That is crazy, honestly. I... just blew me away, 40% more parcels in 10 years. Wow, that has grown. We'll continue to utilize the remote software and technology for the assessors. So as technology increases, as does... I mean, we just embrace all the technology that we're able to. Instead of pens and papers and such, the assessors will be taking out tablets. They'll have direct access to the parcel, and they'll be able to sketch and draw and take pictures and do everything while they're out in the field. Instead of writing everything down, coming back and working it, we'll be essentially live, which is very exciting. We did replace the 2008 Ford F-150 with the 2025 Equinox that I spoke of earlier, and I want to work with our new Human Resource Director on the job descriptions, duties, and the procedure manuals. I have recently implemented a procedure manual for our assessors. I wanted to get that done before we went out on reappraisal, so I can check the box on that particular category. Looking forward to 2026. So we're going to look at staffing department needs. What do we need? I mean, I think we constantly look at that. That's just something we do every single year. What do we need for staffing? Do we have enough staffing? Just a fun fact, we... when I first came into the office, I was number 12 as a 12 full-time employee. So we have gained three additional full-time employees from 2016, and we've maintained that additional staff since 2016. But when you see how much the office and responsibilities and parcels have grown by 40, 50%, I think staffing by an additional 25% over the last 10 years, I think we've maintained the staffing levels very well. And I think that's the efficiency of the office, the technology that Jake has brought to us. And honestly, it's just the experience. And we'll get into the staff and the experience and what they are offering for all these great folks for Lincoln County. great folks for Lincoln County. Um, I'm gonna look at, um, maybe replace, if not complete replace, a budget for another new vehicle. Our vehicles are older, um, I'm, replacing the two older vehicles, um, our assessors are out on the road, and we need to give them good, um, um, good vehicles to drive that are safe. So in twenty-twenty-six, we'll look at the reappraisal of Springdale Township in Har, City of Harrisburg. Um, City of Harrisburg has grown since twenty-sixteen by forty-seven percent in Springdale Township. It's just incredible, the growth that Lincoln County has endured. Delegate with the possibility of reorganization in the House, and I'm considering retirement in twenty-six. I'm, as, um, South Dakota Retirement Eligible. So that's, um, I can see the, I can see the future. So it's, it's, he, it's, it's what I've worked for, you know, this, with, using the South Dakota Retirement Program for the last thirty-seven years, it's, it's why I've stayed here, you know? You look for retirement, right? That's the progression of life. Lots of information.
All right, anybody have any questions for Carla?
Very good, thank you.
Thanks, Carla. Is there any public input on Carla's presentation this morning?
Morning Commissioners Lynn D. Young, six-three-zero South James Avenue in T., South Dakota. Um, so I just want to say I worked with Carla and Commissioner Otten, um, through this process. Um, I first started, oh, a couple of months ago, but, uh, two years ago, as elected county, or city, um, councilperson in T., so I have a vested interest in making sure that all of the assessments are correct in my community. And, uh, had a meeting with Carla, uh, put several questions back and forth, along with Commissioner Otten, and what I found is that their office is, um, very open to answering questions, certainly transparent, giving the information back and forth, all of that stuff's been pretty seamless. Uh, but also, through a document review, and I, I, uh, assessed, or I appealed my taxes this year, um, I was assessed at approximately six-hundred-and-six-thousand dollars, but I had also done some bank work and found that I was over-assessed. Uh, my bank indicated that I was, should be at about six-hundred-and-one. So I'm certainly at full market value, full market value. And through that process, I looked at, um, a bunch of other properties and found that many properties are not at full market value. And as a city councilperson, I want everyone to be at full market value. You should want everyone to be at full market value. So I developed a spreadsheet, um, your commission assistant, can you put it up or not? So developed spreadsheet and just showing it, I didn't even have this information, Carla brought it forward and said, "Hey, there's approximately, um, six-hundred parcels that are difficult to assess." So as a commissioner, or not a commissioner, a city council, I want to make sure those are properly assessed. I want to pay my taxes, and I think everyone else should pay their taxes too. But if you look at some of the, the parcels, uh, the county value here, and then what the market value is, you can see some of these parcels have hundreds of thousands of dollars that are not properly assessed. And that's bad for me, that's bad for you, that's bad for every taxpayer in Lincoln County, because if they're not properly assessed, then they go against rural residents, they go against other people. So we need to figure out a way to do this and to do it accurately. This parcel right here, um, two-eighty-one, originally sold in twenty-three at two million dollars. The county only has it currently assessed at one-point-five. So at five-hundred-thousand-dollar tax reduction, I doubt that today, if you put that property for sale, that it would sell for one-point-five, probably two-point-three or two-point-four. So now we're looking at a six-to-seven-hundred-thousand-dollar discrepancy. That all adds into taxes. All of this could be put back into the pie, so that all of us pay less. I think we need to have a look at this as we go forward with the new state law that's going out there and figure out a better, more equitable way in the future.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public input on Carla's presentation? All right, then we'll move on to our opportunity for public comment. If there's folks in the audience that want to come up and address the board for items not on the agenda, now would be the time to do so. Did you?
One more presentation?
Yeah. Gotcha. I was, thought you were doing the whole thing at once, my bad. Come on back up.
Okay, so in your binders, I started off, uh, with the responsibilities, I'm not going to go over that again, um, I just put it as part of your presentation. And it's also what is on the, um, website, our Lincoln County website, I just truly snipped it and pasted it, um, for you. And just keep in mind, we are mass appraisers. Um, we utilize mass appraisal procedures to determine the market value of property within the county. Mass appraisal is the process of valuing a group of properties as of a given date and using common data, standardized methods and statistical testing. To determine a parcel's value, assessors must rely upon valuation equations, such as the Vanguard Manual or the Marshall and Swift Manual. We must use tables and schedules to develop through mathematical statistical analysis to develop, um, market, our market data. Values for individual parcels should not be based solely on their sale price of a property, rather than the valuation schedules and models that are consistently applied to all properties in Lincoln County. Correct, complete and up-to-date information is essential, and that's why we do the reappraisals. When the process is properly, properly administered, the development, construction and the use of our CAMA systems result in valuations characterized by accuracy, uniformity, equity and reliability. The accuracy of our values depends first and foremost on the completeness, the accuracy of our property characteristics, again, through reappraisal. Um, annual reappraisal cycle, cycles with onsite inspections and verification of sales are needed to ensure this accuracy. All property in South Dakota is assessed annually, but not all properties are inspected every year. Existing properties are inspected periodically through the reappraisal. Um, if you have a new home, we do an inspection of a new home. If you do have an addition or remodel or lower-level finish, we go out and do an inspection. Typically, new properties are inspected from the start of the building permit to the completion. Then, again, are periodically inspected through the reappraisal. Just want to put this out here. Can you narrow it a little bit? Can you shorten that up? Okay. So this is the staff, and this is the staff of everybody in the Equalization Office. I have their hire dates, we have, um, we have staff on board that are actually coming again through the second round of reappraisal. We have a lot of staff that are familiar with the reappraisal cycle, they understand the process. Um, what you can't see is... Jake, can you short, zoom out? So all of these folks that are highlighted in yellow, these are the appraisers who have written a full appraisal and had testified on those appraisals during the Office of Hearing Examiners or in Circuit Court. So we have a lot of staff highlighted in yellow that have gone above and beyond what most appraisers do in the state of South Dakota. They're actually writing full appraisals and testifying on behalf of the county on their appraisal work. The folks that are highlighted in blue, they have written a full appraisal, but for whatever reason, um, were not able to testify. Sometime I was a co-author, so I testified on behalf, as we were co-authors of the report. So I wanted to give a kudos to all of the staff that, um, they're learning, they're constantly learning, they're, they're, they're wanting to learn, they're wanting to do work for Lincoln County, and I applaud them for that. They are doing exactly what they were hired to do. So as we step into the appeal season, let's take a look at the Appeal Guide for Property Owners. So when, uh, when someone appeals their property values, or property values, um, the clerks of the local board are requested, um, to give the property owner their guide. And what their guide shows them is the timeline, what they need to do and what we do, and just, it's a guide, right? So I, I'm presenting the guide that is presented to the property owners, um, for appeals. We also have the guide for local county consolidated boards of equalization, so that's your guide. So I'm presenting to you your guide for the equalization process. It's got the timeline and then duties as the County Board of Equalization. So if anybody listened during the summer study, um, in the summer of twenty-four, there was a summer study on the assessment methodology. There were, I think, four or five sessions on the assessment methodology, and once that summer study concluded, they had five or six suggestions that they would bring to legislation this year. One made it on the, um, legislation ballot, I don't have the, the number, but it was where counties can work together, essentially. So that came out of the summer study, and that was brought to legislation, it was passed and was signed by the governor. So we need to work together, right? That's what that summer study said. The second thing the summer study said is, we need training. We need training for our local folks, our county folks, and training for these folks on what assessments are. And I want to start today by training you folks, because we're looking in, we're heading into the appeal season. And this information is a guide, and it serves as a guide for your board members in evaluating property assessment appeals. Recommendations that we give you are based on mass appraisal analysis, ensuring fair and equitable, equitable property valuations. I want to look at some keys that we should be looking at as a board, as a director. This is what I look at when I'm looking at an appeal. Is the value at market value of their assessment? Is it over-market value? So Constitution says, "Well, we can't be assessing properties over market value." So that's one thing I look at there, when I look at their property value when it's appealed. Is it more than what you paid for it, or is it more than what you could get for it? Does the appellant have any comparable properties that they're giving to you? You want to make your decision based on what I'm telling you, but also what the appellants are telling you. But they should also show you and have some type of fact, factual, bring the receipts, right? Um, so they should be giving you information on why they think their value is over-market And we also take a look at equitable assessments. Are we treating everybody fair and equal? Is the property assessed similarly to the comparable properties? And then again, ask the appellant, what evidence do you have that it's unequal? Does the assessor's valuation range, we'll look at that a little bit, um, reflect, um, equalization of the, uh, of the appealed property? So this is what I look at, I'm giving it to you on how I make my decisions and recommendations. I base my decisions on factual data, relevant to market value, legal standards such as the codified law administrative rule. I consider the classifications on our agricultural and our owner-occupied appeals. I ensure that the, and I want you, because we ensure this, but they need to hear it from you, ensure appellants understand that their appeal is only good for one year. Every year is a new assessment year. Prior appeals don't guarantee a fixed assessment. So just because you appealed it last year and you don't like the value this year, this is a new assessment year. We have a new set of sales that we're presenting to you on how we determine what the valuation should be. I think we need to be better at keeping the discussion focused on valuation and not taxation. They're appealing their value and not their taxes. And sometimes it's necessary to ask some of those simple but difficult questions. What do you believe your property is worth? If you were to sell it, what price would you consider? I ask them those questions, I do think the board should also ask those questions. And another thing we should be really looking at is, were we allowed entry and to do an inspection on your property? Um, if they're denying us entry, how can they say our information is not accurate? We base our information on, on inspection and, and such. I have a few examples, um, I'm just going to brief over them, uh, because this is for you to read too, I want to just brief it, and then if you have any questions. We do have some appeals that just come back time after time and after time. Agricultural classification, so in twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty, many times the ag classification laws have changed. So this is a twenty-twenty-one ag law that has, this is the most relevant law. These are examples of what we're going to be hearing this week. So property owner says they have a tax return, they have a Schedule F, and they show income information, um, on, they show income for the last three years. They also claim that the property serves as the main access to the farm and cattle yard, which they are not the owners of. But we, as a county, found no legal easement recorded for this access. The subject property only has a house and garage on this parcel. The first criteria one must meet in order to be agricultural, the first and foremost criteria that they need to start the testing, what are you doing ag on it? So I see a house and a garage, I don't see any ag buildings, I don't see any, anything crop on it. So when they're not doing anything ag on their property, my opinion of the law, which will be presented to you during appeals, is you can't be tested on the other two if you can't meet the first criteria. You have to be doing something agricultural. So sometimes people will come in, we have, um, discussion based on culverts and drainage that are concerning to them, um, and they're looking at those concerns you, to you as the County Board of Equalization, but they're not really talking about the property value. They're talking about the drainage concerns. The water may be encroaching onto their properties because of the drainage, but a lot of times, when I'm reading through some of the notes from the local boards, nothing on their home has been affected by the water, because we were sure to make those adjustments, but they have water standing on their property. Well, I too had water standing in my, on my property in June of twenty-four. It was a... It was a stream. It was 10 inches of water in 48 hours, 72 hours, whatever that was. But it didn't enter my house. It didn't affect anything. I had to reseed. I had to fix my fence. So we're going to be hearing some flooding concern issues during equalization. And then we also sometimes hear litigation. So sometimes property owners are under litigation on their properties. We have one instance, and we'll be hearing that on the 8th. The property is involved in an ongoing lawsuit with the city. The city issued a stop work notice on some structures that they were going to start building. The appellant actually says that the county should, or the city should not receive any tax benefits from my property. So the city lowered the value on his property to $1. Well, let's keep in mind that the city collects 22% of those tax dollars. The county collects 11%, and the school is about 65%, 66% of those tax dollars. Does the city have the authority to waive all property taxes on a property? I say no. So you'll be hearing those appeals during the April 8 meeting. In conclusion, the board member should ensure that decisions are based on verified data and legal guidelines. Keeping discussions aligned with valuation principles and avoiding taxation debates will help maintain transparency and consistency in the assessment process. When we put our information into civic clerk, so that's where all the information goes in, and then once that civic clerk is posted, then the appellants can see what we have for each meeting. The civic clerk order that we will be presenting the information is, we will have a line item, and it'll be item number one, and we're going to say the time, the parcel number, and owner's name. And then we'll have a brief, agenda briefing form. Then we'll start off with the assessor recommendation. PT 16, which is an appeal back, I have the authority to appeal back the local board's decision. So that form will be submitted in civic clerk. Their signed PT 17 appeal form, if they've gone through local board, you'll have the local board's decision on there. And then in conclusion, you'll have all of the appellant documents that we've been submitted by the appellant. They may not submit, they are not required to submit anything, but what they do submit, we will supply to you, but they'll most likely bring that information to the hearing, so the day of. So our appeals are going to start April 8. We're going to look at our exempt properties. We have two owner-occupied appeals, well, two as of when I came down here, two owner-occupied appeals, and then we'll go into the residential and a commercial appeals. 10 minutes for each appeal is what we have consistently granted to the appellant. If there are multiple parcels, then we give them additional time. So if you have five parcels, we'll give you like 15, 20 minutes, something like that. So that, we are running until noon on the 8th. And then on the 15th, we have two, possibly three sessions. I'm hoping we can conclude this with two, within two sessions on the 15th of April. April 22nd are for any tabled items or cleanups that we need to do as the board of equalization. And then on April 29th, we'll adjourn as the board of equalization. From then, they can appeal on to circuit court if they wish, or they can go to office of hearing examiners, which is in peer. And then from the decision of the office of hearing examiners, again, they can go to Our assessor recommendation looks like this. I'll go, I promise I'll go really fast. So we give the subject property information, all the information you have, history of assessed values, all the detailed information, age, size, year built, sketch of the property, some pictures. The next set of data that we show you, and we show our work, is some comps. Now, these comps are what we consider are comparable to the property. Again, we're mass appraising. We're not taking these adjustments and making plus and minus adjustments. These are going to give you a guide through what we think this property is worth. So this particular property, we have it assessed at $282,000. The sales are indicating anywhere from 287 to 358, so kind of a big range, but they're all the same size, year built, same location, dah dah dah. So, I mean, we are, I think we're assessing this at market value, consistent with like properties. The third page is our actual recommendation page. We're going to show you three approaches to value, cost, market, and income, if applicable. So this particular property is being assessed at $283 a square foot. The cost, which is our, our cost manual valuation, says 272 to 313, so they're right in the middle. I picked this one because it was right in the middle. But this is an actual appeal that we heard today. The market, which is from the market, the sales price indicates values between 291 and 357 a square foot. So this is just slightly under market value. The requested value that you see here, that is straight off the PT 17 form that they supplied to us. If there are any spelling errors in that, it's because there's spelling errors in the PT 17. So I just want to make you aware because we really want to correct that, but we don't want, it's, that's not how it's listed. The assessor recommendation is what we recommend as to the board of why we feel this value is accurate, fair, market. And then, you know, a little tidbit on why, and, but actually, the decision is up to We show a map of where the subject property is located and the sales that we are bringing to you. So these are all right within that same neighborhood. This is something new this year. We're giving you, there's a lot of sales in candlelight acres. We chose five. We probably could have chose 10, maybe even 11, but we chose five. But you can see there's a lot of sales activity in candlelight acres. And then we show our statistics, and this is very important to the assessor in mass appraisal. This determines how accurate our assessments are. And that highlighted yellow is our median, our median ratio for this development, for this neighborhood, excuse me. We're between 90 and 91% of value on this property, and that's where we maintained our level of assessment countywide. There's some higher, there's some lower, but our middle is, is the median. We also look at price-related differential, and that determines if our high-valued homes are assessed lower than our low-value homes, and, you know, there's all kinds of testing for accuracy and consistency. We look at the means, the medians, and the modes. And then we'll show the comparable properties. So same type of information on the five comparable properties. Just breeze right through that. We will have a copy of their PT 17 form, and then any documents that they have supplied to the board. I say do your homework. We're going to publish this on Friday at 5:00, and the hearings will be on Tuesday. Commercial looks a little different than residential. This is the old way we used to do things, and these are all ham inputted. It's an Excel spreadsheet. We formulated it to look something like what we do on the residential, but our commercials are different than our residential properties. We look at them maybe by unit instead of square feet. We try to give you all the components. Again, we show this, what they are requesting, assessment history, and then our recommendation. We show you some comparable properties. Sometimes we can't find a sale, and that's okay. Because we have three approaches to value to look at, cost, market, and income. And if we don't have any sales information, we can't make them up, so we have to rely on the cost approach. This happens to be three sales. We do show an assessment equity. We want to show you, we are assessing these properties very similarly, based on, you know, their occupancy, their age, their square footage. Again, we show the three approaches to value. The market approach is, we only have the 2020 sales. We don't have any current sales of gyms, recreational facilities. But we're showing you our latest, but we're also relying on the cost approach. Show you a map of where the subject's located with the comparables. And again, they're PT 17. This form was used last year, we'll continue to use it this year. It's a stipulation. What is a stipulation? It's an agreement between director of equalization and property owner. And these agreements are based on something that we discovered since the last time we did an inspection on their property. A lot of the assessors during the first part of appeals, they were reading what the appellant was saying, like the condition, this, you know, so the appraisers went out and did a reinspection. Some resulted in nothing, no valuation change. Some resulted in a change. We made that change. We presented it to the property owner, and they said, yeah, that, that value, I agree with that. So once they agreed with it, I agreed with it. We're going to present you that new valuation based on facts. The comments will tell you why. That's at the bottom of the page. Any questions on that part?
Does anybody have questions for Carla on that section of her presentation? I've got a couple of questions, Carla.
Yes.
So Councilman DeYoung brought up a point about these higher-priced homes being under-assessed. So, and I understand that maybe there aren't a lot of good comps for those types of homes, but does it bear out, then, that you use the cost analysis on those? I mean, is that what you're doing? Or how are you, how are you assessing them so that they're coming up short?
Yep, we're assessing them just like we assess all properties, using, we start with the cost approach, and then we make some market adjustments. We don't have the capability of developing, right now with the software we have, to develop a model using a sales comparison approach. That is a regression analysis that must be performed. Our software doesn't have the capability. I'm only familiar with one county in the state that uses a regression analysis model for the sales comparison approach, and that's Pennington County. And then, so they truly have a software that looks at all three approaches, and then the director gets to choose which one they think fits the property. But we do look at sales, and we do adjust our cost compare, our cost models to reflect those changes in the market. And we analyze, I'd say, six to eight months out of the year on what is changing in the market. And we do have the ability to look at properties, like the quality of workmanship, the, the size, the age, the style of home that's being sold. And then if we can determine if there are any adjustments made to those different categories, we apply that in our cost model. Homes that are built of those qualities that may look like were under-assessed, and we are, there's no doubt, we are, the, you can't hide that information. It's all, we put it out there for everybody to see. We can't sometimes put a price tag to how bad that person wanted that house. We are appraising the size, location, the style, the age, and making market. If someone overpaid for that property or underpaid, if, didn't see anything where we're over 100%, and I'm telling you, there are properties in Lincoln County where we are over what they, they, they paid, and that's mass appraisal. Those are the people that should be coming in to you and saying, hey, this is over-market value. But again, sometimes being over-assessed according to the market is an indication that maybe there's some deferred maintenance, and that's why it's necessary to do reappraisals. Some, what you saw on that spreadsheet were agricultural properties. I don't control, ag is not market value. So any parcel that has an ag classification attached to it, you will never see a market valuation on those, never. Because agricultural land assesses, is assessed based on productivity and not market. And I did see some on that spreadsheet, and they are the 39% and 40%ers. I can't do anything. Statutorily, they're assessed based on productivity. So I don't have a lot of control over those. But I can tell you that mass appraisal is typically a regressive tax. And, but I can tell you statistically, top to bottom, we are exactly where we need to be as a county when, when looking at our values and our sales. That's, I don't know if I answered it, I probably went a little long, but.
You're, you're fine, you're fine. Commissioner Aaronson, did you have a question?
Yeah, thank you. I'll give you an example, and I'll ask you the question. So, you know, last year during Board of Equalization, we had homes, plural, that were purchased for over $1 million. The homeowner came in and appealed their assessment. I think the ones that I'm thinking of were 1.1 and 1.2, and they assessed, they were appealing their assessment because they thought assessments of 600,000 and 700,000 were too much. And specifically, the sale of those homes had occurred within three to four months. Willing buyer, willing seller, arms-length transaction. That's fair market value. That is the, that is the South Dakota standard under law for an arms-length transaction. So if it's the, so my question here is, and I've got a couple of them, if it's the homeowners or the parcel owner's duty to come in if they're being over-assessed, whose job is it in this county to make sure that properties that are under-assessed are fixed? Who fixes that?
We do, the assessor's office.
Okay. So now, we've got a list, a spreadsheet from Lynn DeYoung of 600 properties. And Lynn, thanks for bringing this forward. I talked about this with Carla for the last couple of years now, specifically last year. I've got the spreadsheet of all those parcels countywide. There's a lot more than 600 in Lincoln County. Statistically speaking, don't you think that the, the number of parcels that are under-assessed is, we're in a danger zone? Isn't there a level of concern there? Now, I'm going to give you, and I know you're not defending or, you know,
Yeah.
Taking, take a charge on this, but you're going to answer questions about it, though. Some of that, some of the thing, some of the parcels that are on that list, they shouldn't be. They're ag, that's productivity, that's got to get taken off. Some of it is people who appealed, and they got their appeal, but statistically speaking, I'm going down that list, and I even, I know some of those parcels, some I don't. Are we in an area now where there's just too many parcels in this county that are
I would say no.
Okay. And then, could you explain, just for regular taxpayers, this concept of chase the sale? So a lot of people say to themselves, I'm reading the statute here, statute says we got to base your assessment off fair market value. There's been a recent sale, it's been an arms-length transaction. Why aren't we putting a higher weight on fair, on the recent transaction? And why isn't that transaction? And why isn't that transaction taking more of a priority over the assessment than maybe what some other things are? You know, what, why can't, why is your office not allowed to chase the sale?
Well, because we're mass appraiser, not fee, fee appraisers. So that's the first part of that question. Because, and I think I said it, you know, we're looking, um, uh, let's see. Values for individual parcels should not be based solely on the sale price of their property, rather valuation schedules, models that are consistently applied. So if a property is assessed at $600,000 and it sold for a million, I can't make up a number. I can't make up why that is. Because if our value says it's based on, you know, 3,000 square feet, finished basement, four-stall garage, and we have everything assessed like it should, I can't just say, ah, a million dollars. I mean, that's chasing a sale. That's saying, I only want to put a Carla adjustment on that sale. But if I were, that Carla adjustment, which I'm never going to make, that needs to be applied to all the properties that are like that one. These million-dollar properties, and it's not just, I, I looked at a sale today before I came down here. I constantly look at those sales. It sold for 1.3 million dollars and we had 1.2 million on it. Good. That's good assessment, good job assessor. I don't know why those 3 million dollar homes or a, a 1.6 million dollar home sold for 3 million dollars. It had everything, we looked online and looked at the, everything online. We had everything assessed. What are we missing? I think sometimes we're missing, they wanted that house and they were willing to pay anything for that house. I don't have that kind of adjustment that can be applied, you know, through a mass appraisal system on there. You can't just apply it to one and not to all. That's chasing a sale.
Is, is it possible that the algorithm for the mass appraisal system does not have enough data in order to properly assess homes over a certain value?
I say yes to that question. And in 2023, for our 24 assess values, we implemented a new costing manual. And that new costing manual now has high-valued bathrooms, pa, high-valued patios. All these features that you see in some of these million-dollar homes that we were never able to, we didn't have the cost for that, but we do now. So I truly believe, and I truly believe this, I am speaking to everybody in Lincoln County and whoever's watching this. That's why we have reappraisal and that's why we have technology. And I know for a fact, we will be better. We are more experienced. We have better technology. When we started the reappraisal in 2015, we were building what we have today. Our second round of reappraisal is all about refining it and drilling it down and finding some of those valuations that may have been, you know, may have been not overlooked, but we didn't have anything to apply it to. So I, I see those sales, I look at them, I showed them to you on those million-dollar properties. In '23, we were at 69% of the assessment. Last year, we were at 73% of the assessment. This year, we're at 80% of our assessment on those high-value dollar homes. We are getting better. And when you look at 11 that sold and it's like, eh, the assessor doesn't look like they're doing a good job. Look at the thousand property sales that we are doing a good job. We are overlooking them. We aren't. We, we study them. Even our ones were over market. We look at and see, why are we over? The algorithm constantly changes, as does our software and our experience and, and the sales. You know, the sales that we had last year are different than what we have this year. That's why that algorithm looks better. They're different sales. We didn't have 3 million dollar home sales, 1.6 assessments on 3 mil, 3 million dollar home sales. I, I really think those were outliers. I am absolutely confident in saying that. Those homes are unique. And trying to find sales for those unique properties, we don't have that data. But with technology, I can go into Minnehaw County and find some sales to present to you. You've seen that through appeals. That, at least, we're not using those sales to determine the Lincoln County assessments. But we sure have something to offer you that that is the market for that property. So we have reached across our county lines to look for more information to present on, on our assessments. And continually, we raise these values, but guess what happens during appeals? You lower them. So are we too high? If I raise it even higher, you're going to lower. I mean, I had 206 appeals to local board. I'm going to say half of those got lowered, so we must be over assessing. But that's why I appeal them back to you.
Thank you, Carla.
Because some of those, yep.
Do any other commissioners have questions for Carla on that portion of her presentation? All right. Then Carla, you were going to mention Senate Bill 216 real briefly.
Right, just quick, just quick overview. I have to get it out here because I think the media has gone wrong. And Senate Bill 216, what I'm involved in is in that first section. For taxes payable, 27 through 31. The cap for this is for the whole owner-occupied, I'm going to say bucket. It's not per parcel. And we can increase property values by more than 3% if there's new improvements. A couple of weeks ago, there was a media hat out there. Now is the time to do improvements, make additions. The county assessor isn't going to assess it. Yes, we are. And Senate Bill 216 still gives us the authority to assess it. I want to get that out there to the public. And also, even if you didn't have any improvements to your property, and we're thinking about a 3% cap owner-occupied, there is a section in the law that says, notwithstanding the provisions of this section, a county must adjust the total assessed value of all property with an owner-occupied, single-family classification pursuant to 106121. Well, what's 106121? Well, that is right here. And what the law is saying, if I go under that 85% level of assessment, I have to raise it. It's not a 3% cap. The county auditor and I have a lot of discussions because in Section 2 talks about the growth. And this is one, one I, I really agree on. I do, I personally agree on this, professionally agree on this. Since the start of growth and how we track growth in our office, if you built a deck and it increased your value by $2,000, that was growth. If you put lower-level finish in your home and it increased the value by $40,000, we considered that growth. If you built a new home, that whole new value of that home was considered growth. They're scaling back the growth. And I think for good reason. Because growth is to provide additional monies to our taxing jurisdictions, to help schools and county and city and townships. What does that new deck have to do with increasing school budgets? Nothing. And that's the scale back that they're doing. And I, I actually agree with it. But how it was done and how it was administered and how the guidelines took place, you know, when this went into effect in the 1990s, I remember sitting, trying to figure it out. It's changed. And the governor put it in place to change how we track growth, which I think is a good change. But it's going to be a change that's going to affect some taxing jurisdictions, specifically in Lincoln County. And the ordinary, I, department revenue, whoever, all, everybody that's in, in power on that will have to talk about who's going to do this. You know, I track growth, but if there's limitations, who's going to do that? We don't know. We don't know yet. There's a lot of I-don't-knows. One last thing, property tax relief program is also part of this, this new law. Again, I think the law is good. It's the tax relief, they're expanding it. So where they said, well, you only, if you make this income and your house is valued at this, you're going to qualify for this tax relief program, elderly and disabled. Well, they've upped the ante on the amount of income you can make, single and family. And they've brought, they've increased the, the assessed value of your home, of what it could be. But they also put some added information in here. You must own an owner-occupied home for five years to qualify. But they grandfathered everybody in that had previously qualified. So they've broadened it in some, but they also said, but you need to meet this in order to qualify now. So I think this was good. This is going to increase for me and me and, you know, staff. I think when we see a 28% increase in elderly freeze in one year, we're going to continue seeing these property tax relief applications just pick up. But I, I do, I, I like that part of the law. So that's it on Senate Bill 216.
Thank you, Carla.
You're welcome.
Got time for a couple of questions for Carla on that portion of her presentation?
So Carla, in your own words or your estimation, how does the, how does this new bill that the governor signed equate into property tax relief for Lincoln County citizens? How's it, how's it work?
Truthfully, to answer that, I don't know. I don't know until we implement it. I mean, I do see growth numbers decreasing in some cases. I don't know what property tax relief, other than that final section on the property tax relief for the elderly and disabled, I don't know how this is going to work. And they're capping values, they're capping growth. But there are, I mean, when you look at 70% of your taxes go to schools and there's certain parts of the levies that they're not controlled by this. I mean, I don't know what the taxes are going to do. I don't. And I don't, I don't think anybody does, you know? It's just going to be wait and see. They pass a bill, you implement it, and then you find out what the effect is.
Other commissioners have any questions for Carla on that? All right, thank you, Carla.
Thank you.
Um, I'm going to open this up for public comment on Carla's presentation, those last two parts. If anybody wants to come up.
Commissioners, Representative Vascard, and maybe I can address some of the things that were just talked about. There were 12 or 13 tax bills that were introduced at the beginning of session. And a lot of them got eliminated early that I, there was supposedly an attempt to kind of combine some of these and make one good bill. And I voted for 216, but it was one of those deals where you hold your nose because it was the only one we had left. It doesn't do anything to reduce taxes. It just limits the growth. And the whole idea is there's going to be a tax committee this summer, a task force, looking at taxes. And the governor's already made a change. He's come out and allowed you people to raise sales tax and offset some of the property tax. So this was just kind of a start, this idea, this 216 was just kind of a start. And I think by the end of the summer and by next session, we'll probably see a lot of changes in it. At least that's my hope, so that we can get some relief on the property tax end of it. So, thank you.
Thank you for coming in today. Any other public comment on this part of the presentation? All right. If not, we'll move on to commissioner reports. Do any commissioners have reports they'd like to make today?
Madam Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
Do you want to say anymore, Rich, about, we're pleased to have Representative Vascard here today. And I asked him to make just a couple of comments on the past legislative session. So Dick, if you want to give us a little more.
I appreciate the opportunity to be here. It gives me a chance to keep track of what our local governments are doing. And I want to thank you guys all for your service. I understand the commitment. It's, it's a big deal and I appreciate that. I'm going to talk about the budget mainly. And I just wanted, Linda was here and talked about the voter registration, things that got passed. And I have been hit pretty hard by some RVers in my emails complaining about the bills that got passed. But too often in legislation, that's what happens. You bring a bill to fix a problem and you affect some people that are trying to do the right thing. But we'll have to see how this all washes out. From the budget, our former governor made some severe cuts. South Dakota Public Broadcasting Libraries were the two things that, that we heard about the most. And we did restore those cuts and got the programs pretty much back to where they were. But in the process, we were able to find some efficiencies in both of these departments. I think in, if I remember right, the libraries, we were able to save $800,000. They cut three FTEs and we're able to find some areas to be more efficient. And Public Broadcasting did the same thing, and I don't remember that number right off the top of my head. But I, I think this is a start. The, the budgeter, the governor's proposal to make these cuts allowed us to get into this and make, make things more efficient. And the, the discussions amongst legislators are, we need to do this in more departments. And that ties into the state budget. We're eight months in, over eight months into the state budget. The fiscal year ends July 31st. Our numbers are not looking good for the revenue part of it. So we're anticipating we're going to see some more cuts and some difficult decisions have to be made in this next legislative session. And I'm sure, as you are aware, there was some legislation brought that would affected you account, you as counties. They wanted to lower the 3% jangle cut where you're at now or cap down to 2.5. And the sponsor of that bill admitted it would be a punch in the face to the counties. And you guys understand it better than me. I'm a township supervisor. I know what our budget is and to make cuts, we're, we're doing a good job and I sure most counties are. I know Turner County, maybe a year ago, went through their departments and made some cuts. And of course, a big part of that was because of the courthouse deal. But it's one of the problems I see is legislations, we do a piece of legislation that's one-size-fits-all and it doesn't fit all, all situations. So I would just give you a heads up, be looking at this. It's going to come up for discussion again next year about making cuts at local levels as well as the state level. So just be prepared for that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
So I am not doing very good with my opportunity for public comment. I called it ahead and now I forgot it completely. So if there's anyone in the audience that wants to come up for items that aren't on the agenda, now would be the time to do so. All right. Then we'll move, go back to our commissioner reports. Any other commissioners have reports they'd like to make today?
I have a couple for you, Madam Chair. I met with David Meyer, who is the director out at our airport. And I want to report that he will be coming forward. We have lights on our runway and the bulbs that we get down, this is not being, are certainly replacing all the time because the life of that bulb is supposed to be longer. So he's doing some research to try to find bulbs that last longer. On a more som- som- On a more somber side, we've had, um, we've had a lot of vandalism, and we have people now that have decided to dump tires on airport property all the time. So, uh, we're going to, um, I told him to, uh, get, uh, cameras on various areas that we don't have covered right now. And the reason is, we just had a gentleman that invested seven hundred thousand dollars on a new airplane to put in his hangar. So consequently, I think safety, uh, is, is preeminent for us to maintain, uh, uh, safety for those individuals that do have that kind of out there. So he'll be coming forward, Madam Chair, with some recommendations, and to try and, uh, upgrade the security, but also several other comments that may be from our, from our, um, Helman Company, which is our consultant for the airport.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other reports?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Uh, so I went to Sioux Metro Growth Alliance's, uh, meeting, what was it, last week? We met with Senator Mike Rounds. Um, we had a bunch of mayors and economic development officials and county commissioners from both, uh, Lincoln and Minnehaha County there, it was a good meeting. Senator Rounds just gave us an update on what's going on in DC from his perspective. He talked about the appointments that President Trump is making, he talked about the economy, um, he talked about tariffs, um, he, he mentioned, um, that he disagrees with President Trump on, uh, his tariffs policy, and then he mentioned that he agrees with him on a bunch of other things. So, um, it was a good meeting for local-level officials to be able to understand what's going on in DC from, uh, Senator Rounds's perspective.
Thank you. Any other commissioner reports? All right, if not, Drew, do we need executive session? No executive session today? Uh, with that, then, I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
Subway.
Got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, we're adjourned. Thanks, everyone.